Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order on April 1st, 2025. If I could ask everyone if they could please turn their phones off or turn it to vibrate, that would be greatly appreciated. We have a wonderful presentation today, so I'm sure they're gonna, they're gonna want your undivided attention. At this time, we have Chair Rudy Muleta online joining us as well, so we have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to ask Under Sheriff Castillo, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll look at adopting the agenda. County Manager, do we have any changes? Mr. Chair, a couple, or just one change to the, to the agenda. Under item I, action item one, if we could table that, but we are still gonna keep the executive session. Thank you. With that said, entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented with the tabling of action I. So move. It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll move to call to the public. We have quite a few folks that would like to present today. I would like to remind people if they could keep it to three minutes, please. And secondly, if you could please, once you get up to the podium, if you could state your name, as well as your address, that would be greatly appreciated. With that, we'll start with Dan Dillenges.
Supervisors, those of you here today, thank you for having me. My name is Dan Dillenges. I do live in the Tubac region, and I'm here to set the record straight on a number of issues. First, of course, Mario Morales had a rather severe stroke on Friday, was not expected to live beyond that. It's up to the family to pass on the additional information. I hope you all hold the family in him, in their prayers. But Mario wanted me to pass on, as you know, I'm the person that's leading the recall against Sheriff David Hathaway. And he felt a lot of guilt. He spent a great amount of time and energy and effort to get Sheriff Hathaway elected the first time, and things went south for him. And as you all know, he'll tell you over and over again, the same story, he spent the next couple of years trying to correct what he believed was his mistake. He felt guilty, he felt really bad about it, and felt it was his responsibility to try to run for sheriff and correct what he believed was an error. So, you know, I became his friend a couple of years ago, and this is a very sad time for me, but in his spirit, you know, he was known as Toro. You know, that's quite the bull. He was a very powerful individual. He was committed to correcting this, what he believed was a wrongness. We've lost myself and many others who have come to me and asked me to lead this recall a bit. It's not something I aspire to. I've been accused of grandstanding by Sheriff Hathaway, and I don't know what that means in regard to me because I'm not running for office. We have no aspirations to run for office. I'm simply trying to do the right thing that the citizens and residents of the county have asked me to do. That's, that's the extent of it. I'm currently not engaged in the electioneering part if it comes forward. I am saddened to say that, you know, Hathaway was turned away from the family a couple of days ago. It was not a pleasant scene. The hubris on his part was stunning. If he wants to show a measure of respect, my recommendation would be that he simply resign and save us all the trouble going forward. I would ask the supervisors to vote with no confidence in him and his management team, and to request impeachment proceedings at the legislative level. There are things that have come to light that were not known during the election, and it looks like I'm out of time. But if we can, please remember Mario at his best. He was an honor to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Bridget Paloud? I'm sorry if I pronounce that incorrectly.
Hi, I'm Bridget Paloud. I'm also from Tubac. I live at 47 Sandy Lane. I'm here to address an issue that we have. We have an illegal RV park in our neighborhood, and I'd just like to read a letter that our neighbors put together. We're Jennifer Tudas' neighbors. She runs an illegal RV park at 132 East Bridge Road in Tubac, Arizona. In 2010, Tudas was granted a six-site campground use permit. She's asked for a conditional use permit to increase the size of her campground, conditional use permit CEP 10-3-11, to increase it to 17 spaces and to allow campers to stay for more than 15 days. Here are the conditions given in the 2010 permit. We've attached a copy of this permit. She was supposed to have six approved camping spaces limited to one paying customer per rig. All six campsites were supposed to be dry campsites with no utilities, including water, electricity, or septic allowed. There was supposed to be a 15-day stay limit per month. Campfires were to be permitted through the fire department, and the community development department was supposed to conduct an annual review. Tudas has been out of compliance for at least five years. She rents out 11 RV sites with electric hookups and allows her guests to stay for years. On Thursday, March 27th, at the Santa Cruz Planning Commission, Santa Cruz Planning Commission meeting, Jennifer Tudas admitted to regularly allowing the 11 RV campers on her property to dump their ground black water. It is unclear whether she allows them to dump them into her residential septic tank, which is sized for a three-bedroom, one-bathroom house, or directly into the ground. Her RV park is about a half a mile from Santa Cruz River, and we're concerned about the groundwater contamination from 13 years of illegal dumping on her property. Her conditional use permit is supposed to be inspected yearly, but the last inspection was in 2013. The county health department inspected her illegal RV park to review her sewage situation yesterday, and no hoses were visible at that time, and she stated that her renters dump offsite. However, RVs will stay onsite for months or years, not leaving to dump offsite. They are not equipped with tanks that would carry that much sewage. Also, we have found multiple references to dump site availability at her RV park on various RV camp review sites. We've attached a few of those reviews and a picture taken yesterday showing an RV at her park with a sewage line pipe attached. The Planning Commission has tabled the decision to grant her new conditional use permit for 60 days, but we're hoping that the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors will not reward her flagrant disregard for her neighbors and guests' health and safety by approving her new conditional use permit. We're asking you to refuse to consider her new conditional use permit until Jennifer Tudas complies with her current conditional use permit and maintains compliance for 24 months. Thank you.
Thank you. And please understand that we cannot comment on anything that is stated during a call to the public.
Understandable. We just wanted you to hear it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joe Schinkel?
My name is Joe Schinkel, for the record. I live on Sandy Lane, which is a little road off of Bridge Road, and I'm not going to give you all the details. You already heard some, you're gonna hear some more. But in our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting hearing that we had the other day, the people of Bridge Road, I couldn't believe it, we were not being listened to. The list of infractions and noncompliance that the illegal RV park on Bridge Road, it's so blatant, and we're not being listened to. We have this list of, and you heard some of them, and you'll hear more, but we were not being paid attention to. And I could, I walked out of there, I could not believe that they are still actually considering approving this. It's so noncompliant in so many different ways. We are, we live in a land of laws. We live in a land of regulations and zoning for a reason, and they're being ignored. And I'd like you to please listen to what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sandra Schinkel? And then Brian Vandervoort, you'll be next.
Hello, my name is Sandra Schinkel. I live at 21 Sandy Lane in Tubac. I'm here to address the supervisors as the governing body and the executive body of this county. I want to bring to your attention, as the other two people have noted, that the Planning and Zoning Commission failed to follow the proper procedures of their code, their specific ramifications as a result of that. We have a member here of the Neighborhood Committee, Wayne Negreys, met with Mary Dahl and requested that Jennifer be brought into compliance back in December of 2024. In January of 2025, Mary called Jiff in person to let her know that she was out of compliance. In February of 2025, Jennifer filed an application to expand her operation. This was not the first time that the Negreys family brought this type of complaint. They had been bringing those complaints to the commission for several years. To summarize the problem, Jennifer's been running an illegal RV camp for at least five years, and the evidence is shown in the documents that the commission have. On 3/24, I left a message for Mary concerning this matter. She didn't return my call. I called again on Thursday, 3/27, the day of the commission meeting, and I spoke with her at length. During that call, she admitted that she made the call to Jennifer to let her know that someone had complained. She also admitted that she had a longstanding relationship with Jennifer that has lasted at least 20 years. I'd like to state for the record that Mary Dahl signed Jennifer's original permit in 2010. Further, I'd like to note that Mary posted her recommendation to approve the expansion prior to the public hearing. I'm going to contrast this with a neighbor across the road who during the same time was served with a citation. The citation was sent to the wrong address twice. It came back. He did not know that the citation was issued. I called him to let him know, and he's working on it at this time. The reason why I'm here is I want to point out the disparity between the way that these two cases have been handled. Mary told me in our phone conversation that she did not send a letter to Jiff because things are done informally in that office. She called the person rather than putting something in writing, so we do not have a document at this time showing that she actually reached out to Jennifer. "The county doesn't have enough manpower to investigate noncompliance on permits." Those are Mary's words. I could go on, but I want to request the following things. I'm asking the supervisors to investigate this matter and bring that report back to a future public meeting. Based on Jennifer's blatant disregard for her permit conditions, I'm asking the board to reject Jennifer's application to expand. I'm asking that a written citation to Jennifer be issued immediately, and all current residents of her trailer park should be evicted also immediately. They have stayed well past their time. I'm asking for Jennifer's 2010 permit to be revoked. At a minimum, she must demonstrate that she can stay in compliance for at least 24 months. I know I'm out of time. And one more thing, your document, the code, is from 2006. There are a lot of things in there that are really outdated. I'm highly recommending that somebody take a look at that and get it updated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Brian Vandervoort?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Brian Vandervoort. I'm a resident at 31 Saddlehorn in Tubac, Arizona. Later on in your agenda, you will have a proclamation recognizing National Library Week. I want to thank you for that recognition and for the proclamation. I am encouraging the county, the Board of Supervisors, to continue to expand their services through the library system and to the county in, in general. The county has a population of approximately 50,000 people, of which 30,000 live in the unincorporated areas. The unincorporated areas, particularly rail vehicle, continues to grow exponentially, and services are required and, and should be expanded as fast as possible. And I want you to keep, keep always thinking about what more the county can do for the residents of this, of this area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other folks that would like to?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair and Board Member. I'm here because the litter along Pendleton is atrocious. We really need someone to pick it up. I know the probation department used to do that. I pick up on both sides of the trail for over a mile past my house, but I don't go across the street, and it's really pretty bad. I would also appreciate if both ends of Pendleton are posted with a $500 fine for littering to remind people that this is against the law, and my garbage can does not have to bear the brunt of their misdemeanor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, sir. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Wayne Negreys. I live at 99 Bridge Road, right on the east side of the Tubac Bridge. All they said, and more, I've been, they're new to the area, but we've been putting up with this since 2010, this campground on Bridge Road. And I kept over and over telling her, hey, you're not in compliance, you're not in compliance. My dad complained before he passed away. I complained. I was complaining directly to Mrs. Dahl, but nothing was ever done. And now I always told her, hey, what you're doing here, somebody else is gonna think that they can do it, and sure enough, right across the street, they're trying to do the same thing. Dry camping, an event center, a restaurant. It's called OPOE. You can look it up on the internet, and it's right across the street from 132 Bridge Road. But I just, you guys, like Mary Dahl said, they don't have, the county doesn't have the manpower to keep everything in compliance, but I don't know what it's gonna take to keep coming over and over, especially to the development border, to the zoning border, whatever that seems like. They're ready just to say, well, forget it. We'll give her whatever she wants, you know? So that's my opinion. That's where I'm at too. We get all the traffic in and out of there, so like I say, we've been complaining about this for a while, and nothing's ever been done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. Any, any further? Anyone, virtually? Any requests?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to current events. We'll start off with Chair Rudy Muleta. Do you have anything that you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
First and foremost, I want to go ahead and let the Mario Morales family, that their family's in my prayers, praying for Toro. Such a tragedy. But he's in my prayers. On a different note, we've been super busy the last couple of weeks with a lot of activity. First, before I start, I want to thank Alma, Nikki, Claire, staff, maintenance, for a wonderful employee appreciation event, and all the electeds, the department heads, for their generous donations with the prizes as well. It was a very, very successful event. Alma, thank you again. A lot of activity, like I said, I personally met with Senator Gallego, CBP, and Mayor Maldonado. We talked about border issues and some of our priorities down here. And he, he has continued to be engaged with us, and I thank him. Moving on, I had the honor and privilege of attending the U of A president installation, Sirish Caramella, and seems to be a great catch for the University of Arizona. Wonderful event, very, very, very inspiring. The speeches were incredible. And I, along with my two colleagues, attended the services for Raúl Grijalva. Again, my prayers are continued for Raúl Grijalva's family. He was an icon in Southern Arizona, and I personally thank him for all he did for our community. I also, along with my two colleagues, attended the U of A Leadership Academy that's headed by Dr. Martinez Morales. We all spoke to the kids. What a wonderful group of kids. They're all leaders from all of Santa Cruz County, and they range from middle school to high school, which is great to see our future leaders of Santa Cruz County. And lastly, we had lunch. I want to thank Sister Graciela Garcia from Lourdes Academy for inviting us to lunch last week. We had a wonderful lunch, tostadas, and engaged with her, her staff, and the kids during the lunch times. It was, it was good to see what a wonderful school they have. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all sharing today. I appreciate it. Sorry I couldn't be there.
Thank you so much, sir. Supervisor Davis?
Good morning. So I want to repeat some of the activities because Mr. Muleta already mentioned them, right? So this weekend, Arizona Representative Stephanie Stahl Hamilton invited me to talk to a group of students. About 30, 35 students came from New York in New Jersey to learn about border dynamics. So we made downtown walk. They met some other people, community members, the galleries, walk along the border, and it was a group of students from high school, so it was very motivational. As well as, I had the opportunity to go to the, attend the first bi-national inter-mayor summit. That was done by Mayor Maldonado. It was a three-day event. He invited mayors from different places in Mexico, Jalisco, Michoacan, also in Arizona, Sawarita, and other places. So it's good that people are coming to our community to learn about our situations and how great this community can be, not only all that negative narratives that we sometimes get. What else, what else? Some other things that we did, I'll let you finish, because we did the same. I don't want to mention anything.
Thank you, sir. Yes, as Supervisor, excuse me, Chair Muleta stated, we've been busy. I want to thank anyone who took part in the, the March 17th and March 18th, the CPBA. That is the Community Protection Benefits Agreement. I want to say thank you to those who took part in that. I was able to be a judge for the Future Chefs. That happened at Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District. We had students from grades three through eight, I believe. Fixed foods right in front of us. They start from scratch, and they have an hour, hour and a half to finish, and the food that they made was absolutely fantastic. So that was kind of fun. We, we had our first District Three Advisory Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think it went very well. We are going to continue those every month and move those throughout the county. The next meeting is in Patagonia. Let's see. I'd like to thank the, the entire crew for the employee appreciation, Alma, Nikki, Ivana, Tavita, Danitza, the maintenance folks. What a great way to show our appreciation for, for those who work in our county. I'd like to thank Alfredo Velasquez and congratulate him for the GOK Building Art Room dedication. Congratulations, well deserved, sir. I was there, and it went well. One of the main things I want to focus on today is the Chino Fire. I found out about the Chino Fire probably Friday, I believe it was Thursday or Friday. I was actually able to meet with Mr. Amaya from the Forest Service and was able to talk to some of the folks that were, were onsite. And he, he made, he made the comment silent heroes, and they certainly are. They, they had it contained in an incredible amount of time, short period of time, and for everyone who worked that fire and some of the other fires that have occurred over the last week or so, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Taste of Tubac was incredible. The Tubac Rotary put that on. I would highly encourage people to take part in that. It was, gets better every year. Educational Leadership Consortium, we attended. Great job once again to Mr. Alfredo Velasquez. Emerging leaders, I know that Chair Muleta discussed, and also Dr. Rodolfo Martinez Morales. And finally, my thoughts and prayers to Mario Toro Morales and his family. With that, we'll move to, let's see, County Manager, do you have any updates? Mr. Chair, members of the board, nothing to report to that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll move to Letter E, Department Meetings. Mr. Chavez, Finance?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $21,405,775, with an investment amount of $16,98,142. The road fund has an overall balance of $6,964,089, with an investment amount of $7,936. The Flood Control District, overall balance is $2,914,902, with an investment amount of $299,922. And then the jail district has an overall balance of $6,848,100, with an investment amount of $3,273,656. Total for all funds, $65,423,693, with an investment amount of $21,740,000, for an estimated end-of-month balance of $12,161,596.
Thank you, sir. Any comments? Chair Muleta?
I'm sorry. No, thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, no, thank you. We're good. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Let's see. Any further Department meetings? Go ahead. Our wonderful treasurer, Alejandro Paz.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chair, members of the public. Just want to provide another update. Have a couple of updates here, just at random. Today is our over-the-counter taxing sale, April 1st, so anybody interested in participating in that can go over to our office and participate with a certified funds check only, please. The other is on our treasure system update. I have made the executive decision to postpone it till March 2026. That makes me feel more confident in that the provider will be able to have the system fully generated, up and running to this full capability that we need it to function at. And we're also going to allow two other counties to go prior to us and let them be the guinea pigs and solve all the problems before we transition to that system. We cannot afford any more issues or any, you know, trash information going to another system. It's just going to be trash information again. So we're working on cleaning that up. You can be assured that I am pushing with a sense of urgency from our IT and our consultants who help clean up that system to ensure that we have accurate information transferring over. And that is, that it is a smooth transition versus a chaotic one. Our bank transition, we are going through the check testing for warrants still, and we are gonna, we decided to do the transition slowly. We've started initiating some of the deposits coming into our new PNC bank account. We've started initiating some of the deposits coming into our new PNC bank account and some still go to Chase, but slowly we'll be switching everything over from one bank to the other and slowly going from their two credit cards to payroll to warrants, et cetera. Um, and we'll most likely be doing it with each individual entity at a time to make it as seamless and harmless as possible. Um, I also wanted to provide an update, um, as budgets are going to be due this week, I wanted to kind of bring it up to your attention to the board, that there will be an increased request on my behalf at the treasurer's office. Um, and I'm really going to go ahead and explain why we are going to be requesting this change. Um, primarily due to what has occurred, um, due to the past treasurer, we, we need to make sure that we have proper checks and balances and segregation of duties within the treasurer's office and we, while we have it now that I'm in, in there, it's very challenging to keep those checks and balances and segregation of duties while mitigating all risk with the limited staff that we have. Um, so I will be requesting three new positions for the treasurer's office, three new positions that will be creating a new organizational chart that has already been presented to county management as well. Um, and these positions will allow more segregation of duties and checks and balances. Um, so we will be requesting an increase in FTE of three personnels. Um, the last, well, second to last piece is I, I, I don't think I've taken the time to show my gratitude and, uh, towards the entities that have been, you know, extremely helpful, resourceful and cooperative with me and also allowing me with some grace, um, stepping into this role. Um, and it's not a role that I don't think many would desire to step into, um, but I did and I'm loving it and I want to think, take, take some time to think, the School Superintendent's Office, NUSD, Real Rico Fire District, Magallos Suburban, Tubac Fire, Sonora Fire, Algen School District, Little Red, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District, Padawan Road School District, the Sheriff's Office, One Stop Health Services, Finance, Public Frauduciary, Recorders, Assessors, Border Supervisors and County Management for allowing me that grace for working with me and for helping me get on board. This will be my eleven-month on the job and I can say that I feel fully comfortable and confident in what I am doing. Um, I am no expert, I will continue to repeat that, I will continue to learn and grow, um, but I do want to take my time to thank these entities that I support for their cooperation and understanding as we work through some of these changes that are, um, very much needed and necessary. And then my last piece, I'm sorry to end it on a, uh, bit of a bad note, but I recently read in an email today, the delayed sentencing for, uh, the past treasurer. I share my opinion and thoughts along with the constituents that I support. Um, I'm pissed off. I do not like that it continues to get delayed. I believe that we now as the county, as we've been doing so, as I'm part of this as well, um, need to continue to push whoever we need to push to make sure that, um, justice is served as soon as possible. We cannot allow this to linger any longer. I, I agree with the Facebook comments, although I don't like social media that much anymore, um, but, um, the comments there are, how can this lady selling cigarettes, um, have her house swarmed by SWAT, um, taken to custody and yet we have a past treasurer who embezzled thirty-eight million dollars and is still sitting in the luxury of her home? So, um, just wanted to bring that up in attention and into the public that I am frustrated and on their side and I would like for us to please push more, uh, to make sure that this matter is resolved as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I do. Go ahead. So when, first of all, when it comes to those three positions you're requesting, right? What are going to be the, the, the roles and the benefits?
So they're going to be pretty much management positions and it's going to be a customer support, a banking division and a back tax division. And those functions cannot cross, cannot do each other's roles or responsibilities. However, they do work for the checks and balances. So an example would be a person who's requesting a check cannot be the same person who's issuing the check. The person who's issuing the check cannot be the same person who's reconciling the bank accounts on a daily basis. And so we need to have sufficient staff members that would allow us to have those checks and balances in place.
Okay, thank you. And I want to, okay, thank you. And I want to say something else when it comes to the treasure, right? Just like Mr. Paz said, um, he, he wants things different. Trust me, we are also like, um, disappointed and something that I want the community to, to know and be clear that once this is all done, we're going to do a case study and we're going to open it to the community so they can see how everything took place, how the money was taken from one account to another account and all the cases like that will be exposed and so, so that the public can see what happened. So we're going to work on that. When it comes to pushing, there's going to be a press release. Do you know if it came out?
It came out.
Okay. It came out asking the community to, if they felt that we're affected by this case, to send letters, because trust me, like, we want justice and we want things to closure and just like you said and a lot of other community members, we feel the same or I feel the same.
Thank you, sir. Chair Muleta? That's okay.
I, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Paz for, uh, a-again, for his due diligence, his hard work and, uh, his attention to detail. I think it's really critical we, we do that and we will, we have already started working on checks and balances. I know Mauricio has been on it and I, I want to thank Mauricio. I don't think, uh, people realize what he's been through, through this whole process with the treasurer. Uh, he's, uh, he, he, you've done incredible work, Mr. Chavez and, uh, I don't think we thank you enough, um, bringing in independent auditors, uh, that is critical and I agree with, uh, uh, District One Supervisor, Mr. Double D, absolutely, we will have, everything will be, uh, uh, public information once it's all said and done, but we still have a lot of work to do. Uh, and, uh, I, I personally want to thank our attorneys. Our attorneys have done an amazing job. Um, I, I want to thank, uh, staff, Bob, everyone that's been involved because it's been, it's been a tough, a, a really tough situation and, uh, uh, I think we will continue to be on top of things and I, I want to thank, uh, Jesus for also, um, being on top of things and, and for, uh, putting out, uh, that, uh, uh, public, uh, release yesterday to, to allow public to, uh, to voice their opinions as well because we want her to, number one, be behind bars, number two, get the fullest effect of what she deserves. And, and those are my, uh, comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate, I, I agree with everything that's been said, um, but I wanted to go in a little bit, uh, deeper. Thank you, Shannon, uh, for the press release that was put out. Please, everyone, uh, go to the website, um, look at the press release. There's a call for community impact statements. Um, there are links to where you can, uh, voice your frustration and voice your concerns and, and your needs and wants. Um, so I would invite everyone to please, uh, move in that direction and once again, thank you, Shannon, for getting that out this morning. I think it captures exactly what everyone is feeling and thank you for all you do. Mr. Paz, any further departments?
Mr. Chair, uh, we have one more announcement and I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Marisa Chavez.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the community. I'm pleased to announce, um, the appointment of, of Maria Martinez, that's to my left here. She's, uh, our new Assistant Finance Director. Maria brings a wealth of experience, including eleven years working for the Finance Department where she has demonstrated leadership and financial expertise. We're really excited, none other than myself, because she's going to take a lot of workload off me, so she's just in time coming in with, um, for helping us up with the budget. She has been instrumental in the audit. She pretty much has taken the lead over, over the, uh, the current ongoing audit. So I want to just, uh, formalize that and, and welcome her to, uh, what, you know, introduce her to the board and, and welcome her to the community in her new role.
Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I, I want to express that I am, um, I am very happy, um, for being given this opportunity. I'm very excited. I'm also a little nervous, but I think I'm, I'm ready to take on this role and I appreciate everyone in the community and in, uh, in the county, uh, departments that have showed their support and who have been with me, um, along the way. So, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do want to share another, um, another situation we were brought on, on last week, um, from the Arizona Department of Human Health Services, we were ordered, uh, to stop work order on a total of, I, I believe about seven, seven federal grants that we have. How does that impact? That's, that's our health department. Those are COVID-related immunization grants that basically we were told to stop immediately on the twenty-fifth of, of, which was last week. That's a total of about nine hundred thousand dollars that we lost that the federal government asked the state to put a stop and in turn they asked us. That employs about six or seven people on our end, both part-time and full-time. We were fortunate enough that, uh, through the work with the health department, through the work with Maria that manages those grants, we were able to place those folks in other grants that are still open and, and haven't been called up on, on, on our, but I just wanted to bring, uh, that to the board and let the public know what we're dealing with, with the new administration and how they stopped everything abruptly. They didn't give us an opportunity to move forward, uh, until the end of the fiscal year or anything like that. It, it makes it very difficult because we, we can't provide those services to the community and then it affects the livelihood of individuals that we have employed as well.
Thank you, sir. Any other department? Okay. We are going to move to Flood Control, so at this time I'd like to entertain a motion to exit regular session and, uh, move convene into Flood Control. So move. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously at this time. Alan.
Good morning. Chair Muleta, Supervisor Davis, Fanny, Jesus. This is the Flood Control Report, um, covering the month of March. Um, I'd like to start out with rainfall. We, we're lucky enough to get a little bit of rainfall last month. However, the, um, Magallos areas, uh, did receive, uh, below normal, uh, rainfall for, for the month of March. Basically received point eight, eight-seven inches, um, is the average and point, uh, five-nine is what fell in Magallos area. However, there's one, uh, bright spot, it's the Parrito Mountains, uh, which received one point two-six inches, um, along with the gauge, uh, near Patagonia. Uh, moving on to some housekeeping, the flood hazard information sheets, uh, we received two-hundred-and-fourteen in the month of March, uh, seventeen flood use permits and one drainage complaint. Moving on to projects, uh, Ephraim Canyon Project, uh, at the time of, of the report, we did not have an update. Uh, Patagonia Regional Flood Control, uh, District Project, a draft of the Phase Two scope has been completed and we're looking at some refinements right now, so talking to different stakeholders about the, uh, scope. And also, uh, the town of Patagonia did, um, submit a report and it's attached. So, that's my report for today.
Thank you. Anything from the city?
No, sir.
Okay. Public comment? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move from the Flood Control District back into the regular, uh, session.
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Taken.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'm going to deviate from the, uh, agenda, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll hold the executive session until the end of the meeting or towards the end of the meeting and, uh, like to move into, um, H, Study Session. Um, and the presentation on the My Hometown is Cool Project by Lourdes Catholic School. Supervisor Davis, would you like to introduce them?
Yeah, so, so I, I wrote something really quick. So, "The Border Supervisor is excited to begin initiate, inviting schools and youth to attend and participate in our meetings. As part of this new initiative, it is a true honor to kick things off with the incredible students from Lourdes Catholic School, both middle and high school. On March nineteenth, I, I had the privilege of being invited to Lourdes Catholic School and the University of Arizona 4-H Club Youth Program to serve as a judge for my hometown is cool elevator speech competition. It was truly inspiring to see students from sixth to twelfth grade present it, present their innovative ideas and their passion was nothing short of motivational. This program empowers youth to explore the community, identify local resources and needs and develop creative strategies that can lead to real positive change within the community. It's especially exciting to present the group behind this project title, Safe Crosswalks for a Safe, Safer Community. They won and received twenty-five hundred dollars to bring their vision to life. The project is a testament of power of youth minds making a meaningful difference in our community." So, you guys come here so they can present?
And they're going to take the stage and we're going to become the audience.
Um, good morning, Board of Supervisors and County, uh, Supervisors and members of the audience. We come from Lourdes Catholic School and we are members of the 4-H, we are members of the 4-H Warrior Club. And our team is high, Ivan Enriquez, Isabella Hernandez, Mary Mayers, Miranda Mayers, Daniela Vega, Emiliana Guarte and Ramina Gonzalez. And our project is Safer Crosswalk for a Safer Community and we have been selected as the winning, winning, um, team as the, our town is cool hometown and we have won. Installing a well-marked crosswalk near the Circle K on Arizona State Route Eighty-two will enhance student safety, family safety, community safety and pedestrian safety. This will reduce the risk of accidents and with the two thousand dollars we receive, we can fund high visible paint, clear signage and a traffic alert. So our project will benefit families, students in the community in general by providing a safe crossing path for students who want to walk to a Circle K, where we show peace of mind to parents, knowing that their kids aren't risking their lives just to cross the road. We also have a church, some businesses and even people living around the zone, so this will really help if they're ever in the need to cross. So I've noticed two things when driving by, one is that, one is that in the mornings, people usually go out and walk their dogs or exercise. or exercise, so by not having a designated crossing path, it is really dangerous for pet owners and everyone in general to cross. The second thing is that when there's more demand of people trying to cross the road, it's usually at the time when there's also most traffic, so the highway is busier, which makes it again hard and dangerous to cross. Why it matters? High traffic speeds. Highways have a fast-moving traffic, making it dangerous for pedestrians, especially near our school. Lack of safe crossing. If there is no designated crosswalk area, students and pedestrians are forced to cross the highway in an unsafe manner, risking accidents. Long-term cost savings. Investing in a crosswalk now is cheaper than having to deal with medical, legal, and infrastructure costs after an accident. Driver distractions. Drivers may not expect pedestrians on highways, so they may not be alert for people crossing On this slide, we added two visual images to help you guys interpret and visualize the future placement of our crosswalk. We're planning on adding dashlines onto the road as well as some suggested signs to help prevent any incidents as well as to enhance traffic awareness.
ADA has specific criteria for installing of crosswalks. They are based on traffic, on traffic gaps, crossing distance, uh, and public, and public demand. Public or general crosswalks are white and school crosswalks are yellow. A traffic study is needed before any installing of any crosswalk.
This is the crosswalk where it's evaluation form from ADA. And they use this to investigate results. Our team has already reached out to ADA and as well the mayor to schedule a meeting. We're still getting a response, but we wanted to thank you for inviting us here to present our community project and we are open for anyone that wants to do collaborations and spread our knowledge on this presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Question.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Supervisor, Chairman Moletta.
Yeah, I just want to thank, uh, the students for the wonderful presentation. I, I personally, uh, am really familiar with that area because, um, that, that's one of my bike routes. I come down the, the hill there on Patagonia Highway and during school hours, it gets really testy and really scary there. Um, so I, I can attest to what this issue is and, uh, uh, you know, I believe, um, County Manager Valdez has already mentioned some ideas to Sister, uh, Graciela Garcia and, uh, uh, we'll see however we can assist, we will assist. And thank you for that wonderful, um, project and presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to congratulate you again for what you said, a phenomenal job and all the teams that presented that. I was also a judge and, congratulations, Norma. You will be a cooperative extension. You guys did a phenomenal job and like your famous words or motto, you're beyond the ordinary and congratulations for giving us a presenting to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go get a pen for each one of them, okay?
So, you want to get them? Yeah. So, okay, sounds good. So, really quick, I want to, um, this is exciting, right? So, we hope to start bringing more students and, and present, but, uh, I got to thank some people. First of all, the, the parents, right? They're doing a great job. Uh, Noel Garcia, because he's part of this group, Santa Cruz County 4-H Hiking Leader, Nina Hopkins, Lourdes Catholic School 4-H Club Leader, Sandra Contreras, Principal of Lourdes Catholic School and Middle School, uh, parents of the students of the winning team idea for the, for H, my hometown is cool, uh, Sister Graciela Garcia. I know she's in Italy, right? But she's, she's very supportive. Norma, thank you for everything, for having this, for this club and, and having these great students. So, we have the doors open for the county and anywhere that we can help, we're going to help the students and this is really, really emotional and motivation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again. And I want to say thank you. Um, we all, all three supervisors come from a background of education and there's a bright future, not only for our, our county, uh, but for the United States as a whole. So, thank you so much. And our clerk of the board right now, Ms. Alma Schultz, is handing out some of our county pins. Uh, we want you to wear that with pride and that's our way of saying thank you. So, keep up the great work.
And something really quick, that day, Mr. Velasquez was a judge, Chris Young, uh, Missolais, Mayor Maldonado. So, it was a really nice event that day, so thank you again for coming.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're gonna, we just, uh, completed, uh, letter H. Letter I has been tabled, so we're going to move to the consent agenda. Um, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
It's been moved?
Taken.
It's been seconded. At this time, uh, we do have a comment, uh, section and I know that Supervisor Davis has a few proclamations that he'd like to read and then I'd like to read a few proclamations of some great, uh, some great things that are happening within our county. Supervisor Davis.
Okay, so it's an honor for me to read this proclamation. National Library Week, April 6th, 2025 through April 12th, 2025. Whereas libraries spark creativity, feel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to the new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong, lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas libraries nurture, nurture young minds through storytime, STEM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifelong. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the county are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now, therefore be resolved, be it resolved that I, Supervisor Davis, Supervisor Fanning, and Supervisor Moletta proclaim April 6th to 12th, 2025 as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage residents to visit the Nogales-Santa Cruz County libraries, explore resources, and celebrate all the ways that library draws us together as a community. Passed and adopted this first day of April 2025 by Rudy Moletta, Chairman, John Fanning, Vice President, and myself, Mr. Carlos Davis.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Second one. So, proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, April 13th to the 19th, 2025. Whereas thousands of dedicated public safety dispatchers, call takers, telecommunications, and telecommunications support personnel throughout the state of Arizona provide dramatic life-serving services by taking the distressed callers and common historical crime victims. They make difficult decisions using limited information to save lives or reduce property damage on a daily basis. And whereas the critical functions performed by these public safety dispatchers, call takers, telecommunications, and telecommunications support personnel, both sworn and civilians, play a significant role in the daily lives of over 7 million Arizonians. And whereas the Arizona Department of Administration, in cooperation with the Arizona Chapter of National Emergency Number Association, has set aside this week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, to recognize the efforts of these dedicated people. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon our patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025 as a National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, commemorating public safety telecommunications who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered the dedication service to their community. In witness, therefore, we have hearing to set our hand and cast the seal of Senate, of Santa Cruz County to reaffix this first day of April 2025 by Rudy Moletta, Chairman, John Fanning, Vice Chairman, and myself.
Let's give both National Library Week and National Public Safety Telecommunications Week a nice round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And I have, uh, two proclamations that I'd like to read. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of natural night sky is shared heritage of all humankind and whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within the local communities. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental detrimental consequences with significant impacts on the ecology, um, and human health of all communities. And whereas 80% of the world's population lives under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts, disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. And whereas light pollution represents a waste of natural resources amounting to roughly 3 billion per year of wasted energy in the United States and contributes to diminished energy security. And whereas Arizona hosts 10% of the world's largest telescopes, including the world's largest optical telescope and many of the world's most revered, uh, observatories, including the Lowell Observatory, the Smithsonian, uh, Smithsonian Astrophysical Observatory, Whipple Observatory, the Smithsonian University of Arizona MMT, and Large Binocular Telescope Observatories, Kid Peak National Observatory, and the Vatican Observatory. And whereas Southern Arizona hosts an enormous number of amateur observatories, many of which produce professional research. And whereas Southern Arizona draws thousands of visitors annually who are attracted in significant part by our dark night skies. And whereas optical astronomy, which is both hindered and endangered by unfettered, uh, unfettered light pollution, represents a statewide capital investment of more than $1.3 million and an annual economic return of over $250 million, including an indirect attachment to more than $150,000 jobs through the aerospace and defense sector. And whereas Southern Arizona is home to dozens of nocturnal wildlife species, including bats and jaguars, and these species rely on undisturbed night environment to hunt, mate, and thrive. And whereas Dark Sky International Headquarters in Arizona is the globally recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, Arizona, hereby declares April 21st through the 28th, 2025 as International Dark Sky Week in Santa Cruz County, Arizona, and ask each resident to join in observing this important week and also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources. Proclaimed and adopted this first day of April 2025, International Dark Sky Week. Let's give them a hand. And lastly, I know we hold all these very dear, but this has to do with, uh, all the supervisors' background and that's early childhood education awareness. Whereas early childhood years are when the brain grows and develops the most. In fact, 90% of a child's brain develops by age five before they enter kindergarten. And whereas scientific research has shown that a child's experiences in their early years affect how their brain develops. Research has also proven that kids with quality early childhood experiences do better in school, are more likely to go to college and have successful careers. They also tend to be healthier and demand less from the public welfare system. And whereas the goal of Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Alfredo I. Velasquez in 2025 is to raise a, uh, community awareness about the support system Santa Cruz County has for families that have children from zero to five years of age. And whereas Early Childhood Education Awareness Month is sponsored by the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent's Office, First Things First in attendance today. Mariposa Community Health Center, University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Family Resource Centers, uh, Resource, and Nogales, Patagonia, and Rio Rico. Child and Family Resources Incorporated, Child Care Resources and Referral, Nogales-Santa Cruz County Libraries, Department of Developmental Disabilities, Santa Cruz County, uh, Santa Cruz County, Nogales Unified School District Number One, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District Number 35, Patagonia Public Schools District Number Six and Number Twenty, Sounoya Elementary District Number Twenty Five, Santa Cruz Elementary District Number Twenty Eight, Charter, uh, Charter Schools, Private Schools, Child Parent Centers Incorporated, which includes Nogales Challenger, uh, Challenger, Western, and Rio Rico Head Start Centers, Preschools, and Child Care Providers. And whereas during the month of April, informative messages will be communicated to the community via social media, radio, and signage, including Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Alfredo I. Velasquez promoting kindergarten preparation and the kindergarten enrollment process. Other messages will include how to identify and work with young children with special needs and mental health concerns. Some activities during the month include a parent educator retreat, professional development concerning the importance of physical activity on mental health, an early childhood art exhibition, as early childhood leadership awards luncheon. Uh, the Santa Cruz Regional Partnership Council, uh, First Things First celebrates the Young Child Community Event. The University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Family Resource Centers promoting both behavioral and mental health. Uh, Mariposa Community Mariposa Community Health Center promoting the importance of wellness checks, dental care and vaccines, and American Sign Language courses at the Nogales-Santa Cruz County Libraries. And now, therefore, the Santa Cruz County, Arizona Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Early Childhood Education Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by local, state, and national organizations to work toward the elimination of personal and institutional violence against women and children. Passed and adopted this first day of April 2025. Congratulations, Early Childhood Education Awareness Month. Like I said, we have some great things happening within our county, and we thank those folks who are actively involved in all of the proclamations that we just read. Some great things happening. At this time, we are going to move back into the, excuse me. With that, we have a motion. Do we have any further discussion? Supervisor Moleta, Chair?
I just want to thank you for reading the proclamations.
Thank you, sir. Anything further?
Uh-uh.
Okay, with that, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, consent agenda as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And now, with that, we are going to move into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, excuse me, A3, discussion and consultation for legal advice regarding utility easements in or around Cross Creek Connector. As well as number two, pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, A3 and 4, discussion and consultation for legal advice from legal counsel and direction regarding the GovNet Incorporated litigation. At this time, excuse me. At this time, entertain a motion to move to executive session.
So move.
Second.
As we're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will move to exec. At this time, I entertain, I'd like to entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session. So move.
Second.
We're moving and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we'll move to letter K.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Point of personal privilege.
Please.
I just want to announce that I will be announcing my position as county supervisor of resignation.
Your what?
My resignation as county supervisor. Ah, April fools.
Hey, you got me, by the way. You got me. Holy cow, it's like, did you guys see my mouth? Wait till you see the video. All righty, payback.
I know it's a bad joke, but I thought I'd surprise you.
Payback. Okay, now that my heart stopped and then started again, we'll go to letter K. Do I have, here, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
As we're moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are now adjourned. 11:24.
Have a nice day.